Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a special meeting, City Council of City Pearland for Monday, January the 8th, 2018. I can't believe it's gone by so fast. Our purpose for tonight is a new business of the executive session, Government Code, Section 551.074 for Personnel Matters Regarding Appointments to Boards and Commissions. Obviously, we will conduct that with individuals and we could discuss the items that we have to discuss with them at the time, but we cannot make a decision in executive session. But upon return to open session, we do have an option to, on the new business item number one, to make a decision if the council so desires at that time. So at this time, we will recess into executive session at 5:31. The council has returned from executive session at 6:38 and moving in our agenda to item number one, considering possible action regarding appointments to the boards and commissions, the council will take no action on this item tonight. Moving to item three on our agenda, we are adjourned at 6:39.
I just want to tell you guys real quick, those are invitations for the Dr. Pete Pearland High School Musical Production Track. We're opening this Thursday. We're running two weekends, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and we would really love to see you guys there. There's instructions on how to pick up your ticket at will call. Okay?
All right, thank you. Do you have to bring the balloon?
No, you don't have to. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, thank you. for January the 8th, 2018. Welcome to the new year. I hope you had a nice new year service and we're going to try to get out of here a little early. I understand there's a special game tonight and some of you may have a feeling you'd like to see what happens to the... And one of the interesting things is that the Alabama team has a Houston-area boy as their quarterback. I think it's from Channel View, I believe, isn't it? And I think that's fantastic that we've got one of us down there keeping an eye on the ball and I hope he stays on the ball and I know he will. Let me open the city council and I'll ask Councilmember Carbone to give us an invocation and our chief, Police Chief, God inspires, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Y'all would bow with me. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for all the blessings, everything we take for granted in this great city and the great state. Be with us tonight, help us make wise decisions, lead us and guide us, be with everybody out there protecting us and all our first responders and get us all home safely tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
[inaudible]
We have a far-fetched new year ahead of us and I think there's a lot of good things that are going to happen, like a bunch of fine things happened in 2017. And this is our first agenda of the new year and most of the items, you know, during the last part of last year, we had started working on items in the agenda that were part of the agenda that the council approved on improving some of our projects and work of contracts and make the city bigger and better and make it a city that we still will always be proud of. Moving in our agenda to item three is a roll call. All of our city council members are here tonight with bright and shiny faces. Item four is citizens comments. Did we have anyone with us? Oh, right, here they are. Okay. Wonderful, we have Andrew Miller here tonight. He's with our Keep Pearland Beautiful organization.
All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Andrew Miller, the Executive Director at Keep Pearland Beautiful, address 3416 Norma Lane. Just wanted to give a quick update on Keep Pearland Beautiful. What they should be passing around, you should be getting is our annual report, which we are on the same fiscal year as you, so it would have ended September 30. Also, I've attached a quarterly report for this previous quarter, which would have been October through December. Just looking at the annual report, we've done a lot this past year and whenever you open it up, you'll see our three main mission points, which are clean, green, and beautiful. We have clean being litter prevention, green being recycling, and third, we have, you know, beautification that we do in the city. So you'll see various stats that we've accomplished over the year. Draw you attention to the middle. At the recycling center, we had 38,192 customers this past year. We diverted 827 tons from the landfill by recycling. You can see all the mixed recycling that we did over the past year. Educated 11,279 residents at outreach events that we did. And yeah, that's about it for the annual report. I mean, just take a look at it and you can see all the great things that we're doing in the community. If you move on to the quarterly report, which are the other two pieces of paper attached, we raised $27,000 at our plant time luncheon this past October. We also raised $8,000 at our Tortalights Bike Ride and those funds go to hike and bike trails in Pearland. And we have about $60,000 that's saved up that we are willing to issue to Parks and Recreation at the city in order to create some new sidewalks and hike and bike trails. Going down, we had, there's a few stats down there, 139 community service workers. We get them on Saturdays. They completed 687 hours' worth of work, valued at $16,000. Our Adopt a Spot program, they volunteered and that was valued at $8,000 this past quarter. And our other volunteers that we had valued at $7,200. Our cost benefit ratio for this past quarter, which means for every $1 that the city invests in us, it's what we give back to the community and for every dollar that was invested, we gave back $4.28 to the community. And the second page on that really just goes over some more recycling center stats for this past quarter. One thing I'll draw your attention to, and this will be my last thing, is our diversion rate, which if you're looking at the bar charts is the bottom one. In 2014, our diversion rate for the City of Pearland was 10.73, sorry, 10 percent. And this past year, our diversion rate is now up to 17 percent, which is a 62 percent increase. So that's how much we're diverting from the landfill for the city as a whole now. So I know you can't ask any questions at this point, but if you do have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. You know, you can call the KPB office or email me. I'd be happy to talk to you. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you so much, Andrew. We have one other citizen, Jared, Jared Bustard. There he is. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. My name's Jared Hostetler. Elvett County Road 127, address is 17410, Pearland, Texas 77581. I was here in December and I'm back here again in January. My house was recently annexed in the Ariel Annexation and I come again to request that you guys de-annex my house from the city. Every day when I drive home, I turn right off of Dixie Farm Road on County Road 127. Soon I see a sign that says leaving Pearland C to Limits and sure enough, I am because there's nine homes that I pass that were removed from the annexation plan. And then I continue down that road, still traveling away from that sign that says I'm leaving the city, and I soon arrive to my house. I pull in my driveway and I shut up my car and ask myself every day, why is my house considered to be in the city when those nine homes I just passed are just like my house, not considered to be in the city? A lot of you guys justify annexing the residence because you say we use the city roads and stuff and, you know, because our proximity is so close to the city, we benefit from that. But don't those nine residents that I just passed benefit the same way that I do? You know, my home is outside the airport. It's not a business. It's not an airport. It's a home. It's my home. And once again, I ask that you de-annex my property from the city and give me the same equal treatment that you gave those nine residents that live closer to the city than I do. Thank you very much and God bless.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Thank you. Moving in our agenda to item number five, the consent agenda. Councilmember Carbone, would you present the consent agenda for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe a councilman has asked me to remove item H.
Remove item H?
Yes.
Okay.
To consideration of possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through L, with the exception of H, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Does staff have a report?
For H, Mayor, or?
No.
Foot bounce, no.
Good, super. Okay. We do have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to item number H.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, Resolution R 2018-6, a resolution awarding a bid for the removal installation of new running track surface at the rec center and auditorium, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As we reported in a Thursday packet a few weeks ago, the track at our rec center is in need of replacement. This is original with facility, I believe, in 2010. And so, expected useful life of those is, I'm told, between five to six years, so we've gotten that out of it and it's time to replace that. So we have a good wearing surface for the users there that remains safe and sound. As was mentioned again in that packet, suggesting using some of the park development funds as an appropriate use for the funding source on that to get that done.
Okay. I appreciate that input. Does the council have any question or comment on this item?
Mayor, I have some. Is anyone at the end?
I was there.
Yeah. Do we have anybody here from the company that's going to get this contract? Go ahead, Bob, get up.
They are not. As our prior practice has been since we started having vendors come to the meeting awards, one of the exclusions to that has been cooperative contract purchases. Reason being, typically on those cooperative contracts, they are not awarded with an avenue to recoup travel costs and frequently those contractors are far-flung because they're usually nationally competed. In this case, the contractor is from KEMA, but I wouldn't have expected parks to think to countervein, you know, prior practice. Hopefully, maybe parks staff present will be familiar enough with the proposal to respond or myself.
Sitting here on council, I have particular questions to ask the vendor and he's not here, or she, whoever it is, not here, I don't think it's, you know, incumbent upon us as the city employees to make those decisions. And so, that's one of the things. But there's a couple of items on there that I've got some concerns with and just need some explanation on. And I guess one of the things, I want to find out what this attic stock is on the bid item. It's 260, eight, nine, sixty-four, twenty-four hundred and eighty dollars.
I think we can answer, or attempt to answer, your questions. Bear with us.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I also have Stephen Michael. He's our facility supervisor here with us, who's been very heavily involved in the getting the quotes for this purchase and will be glad to answer your questions on that.
So the attic stock you asked? You asked about the attic stock and that's 2.5 percent, which is $2,275. So can you explain to them what that's for?
Attic, sorry. Attic stock is simply an extra percentage usually that they allow us to keep after the project is done. So if they need to replace a segment here or there in years down the road, that we can just cut out that segment and replace it with something that matches exactly. So if there's color scheme variation in the future, you know, five, 10 years down the road, we have that exact original match to replace. It's basically just a large, it's a patch.
Okay. And the other thing, I was looking in the terms on this. When we signed the purchase order, we had to pay them 50 percent of the contract. When they order material, we pay them a balance of 50 percent of the contract before anything's ever done. What kind of liability does that place upon us in there that's going to be done, done correctly or whatever, since we've already paid the money out for everything?
I can try, I guess. The, in the past with flooring manufacturers, it's similar to flooring, carpet, anything like that, they don't keep that kind of product in stock. This particular flooring is made in Italy, so in order for them to place the order, they have to have a certain percentage in order to buy from that plant in Italy to have it shipped over. Mondo is an international product. Basically, from anything from the Olympic venues to universities, high schools, they're all pretty much Mondo products that are used. So that is the traditional or the normal way that flooring is replaced, is there is a percentage paid down. We have in the past used them before and they've asked for 50 percent because of our working relationship with them. We've not had to pay so much, so that's something that I could probably approach and see about reducing the percentage, but that's, 50 percent is pretty standard for flooring and track.
In the terms and conditions, it's 50 percent when you sign the purchase order. And then it's 50 percent again when they place the order themselves. So you've got 100 percent of the contract money out there already going before we even, you know, and then coming in and placing, you know, it's pretty extensive work, you know, to come in and replace the flooring in there. So, but it's just my concerns they did that and, you know, we're out with all the money and I don't know how long it's going to take us to get this in. I didn't see a schedule on the construction dollars or what have you to come in and put this in. So that was one of my concerns too, of not having a schedule of coming in, taking up the old and putting down the new and resurfacing the floor and stuff like that in order to put the new one in.
Yeah, the construction timeline is two weeks and we'll be scheduling that in alignment with some of our other programs that we've got going on, but from the time they start pulling up the old surface until the new one is completed, it's two weeks.
And I noticed also in there that each one of them, you know, they say five dumpsters each is $750, that's another $3,750. Is there anything that we could do with waste management to have our own, save that $3,700 or whatever? Because they're going to be just sitting out back, I'm sure, and somebody come down, pick them up, call it off.
That is standard pricing when we've just demoed some of our playgrounds and taken them to the dump as well. Very comparable prices on that, what we have paid. Again, we can look into that to see if we can work out a partnership with waste management, but that wasn't in the initial plan.
Yeah, and you know, the thing about it, I go back to originally, I was speaking about it, having someone here that is with the company. We make all kinds of decisions we want to make and y'all can tell us what you're going to do, but, you know, if it come down in a real case, you know, they can say, hey, we didn't make those decisions to the city, y'all made them reset, you know, saying what you're going to do and what have you. So I don't know if legal department, if we would have a leg to stand on if something really happened that we made a decision here on council or our staff did with the absence of having the vendor here.
Not having the vendor here isn't going to affect ultimately the city's rights as far as if somebody doesn't perform. It just makes it more challenging, as you know, when somebody already has their money and they haven't performed, then it makes it more difficult to get that back.
All right. I, maybe I'm the only one that feels this way about it, to be honest with you, but it's kind of offsetting a little bit. I've never seen where you could pay for a whole job before you ever get started. You know, that's, I don't know, maybe that's the wrong kind of sign.
I would say it's not unusual for the short-term contracts. We'll draft, I'm assuming we'll draft the language in the contract that puts a punitive measure of rental form, so we can go after them. So we can just be sure that we do that.
I have a question. What type of flooring is currently at the auditorium?
Right now, the running track is a product made by, it's out of recycled Nike tennis shoes.
And it only lasted us seven years?
The lifespan on that track was five years and we've made it seven, yes, that's correct.
So this lifespan, the lifespan of this material is supposed to be expected to be what?
Fifteen to 20.
Okay. The warranty only only has ten.
That is correct.
That's just as long as they'll replace it.
I had a meeting at 2:30 this afternoon over on the second floor of the rec center and it was in the little alcove there, office building, I think it's your office up there, I'm not sure. And you walk out and you're right on to the runway. And I was really surprised how many people were there and I had a chance, I was waiting, I thought I'd just ask a couple of questions because I knew, I said, there's, I knew that we were going to do this, had this on the agenda tonight. And I asked them what their feeling about the carpet was and they said, I don't know about the carpet, I think it needs to be replaced, it's getting old. And said, you can hook your fence, you know, your shoes, toes and it catches there once in a while. But they said that that is one of the greatest things that the city has done. Said, there are a lot of great things in the rec center. And they said, but for us people who do this type thing, jogging and walking, that we could do it 64 days, 65 days a year and 365 days. And they said they were very happy that we had it and I said, well, we might be able to replace in this. And they said, that would be wonderful if we could. And said, it just, it just gives us a more sure-footed footing for us to do our both running, jogging, and walking. And she had a couple of kids with them too, and so it was kind of interesting. So I think it's a good move. I believe it will last long enough, amortize that over 10 years, something like that. There's about 10-year timeframe on this one?
You know, this is what I say, there's nothing against the city staff or what have you on here. And if you go back to in the beginning, when that auditorium went down, it was voted the best auditorium in Texas, Louisiana, and Oklahoma. It was a fantastic job, I bet it was. But I just had, I'm a dollar's got size.
So Councilmember Owens and council members, I think we're in agreement with you that we feel a little bit uncomfortable if it's your prerogative to negotiate that agreement with legal assistance specifically related to the amount of the, I think 50 percent down is standard, but then maybe upon delivery on site for the balance of the material once it arrives, I think we can, staff can probably get that taken care of if you're in favor of that.
John, it's little things like this jogging trail that makes Pearland love Pearland. Any other question or comment, council?
Just to clarify what Mr. Branson says, is that just direction we can give the attorney and pass it as written tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess to comment on the vendor not being here, I get it from the by-board side or the cooperative bidding. These are slim, slim, I mean, they're making money, don't get me wrong, but they're slim deals if they had to show up everywhere because these are pre-negotiated for across the state, sometimes the nation. So it'd be great if they were here, but I understand why we do it and why we've done it historically like this.
I agree with you. Thank you. Any other question or comment? Hearing none, we do have a motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed six to one.
Add information in the record, let's move into new business, which is item six on our agenda. Items one and item two, Councilmember Moore will introduce and then our city secretary, by law must read those in their entirety and then we'll proceed from that.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, Resolution Number R 2018-1 and Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-2, so moved.
Second.
Just to clarify, these two items are associated with the Lower Kirby District and these are properties that the city has, there were a total of seven properties that the city's moving forward with the process of eminent domain in which we were unable to negotiate for the purchase of the property and so we're having to go through the eminent domain proceeding. These are the final two out of seven properties that we're having to do that with. And for purposes of complying with state law requirement, I will read, as just indicated, I will read the entire caption of both resolutions. R 2018-1, a resolution of the City Council of City of Pearland authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property associated with public improvements in the Lower Kirby vicinity. All of that 4.994 acres of land located in the James Hamilton survey, abstract 881, Harris County, Texas, being all of the 4.961 acre track described in the deed from Mary Joyce Hardy, also known as Joyce Pounds Hardy, to Susie M. Lawrence, recorded under file number RP 2017-2879, in the official public records of the real property of Harris County, Texas, which is all of the 4.24 acre track described in the deed from Mary Joyce Hardy to Susie M. Lawrence, recorded under file number V 507633, in the official public records of real property of Harris County, Texas, and the residue of five acre track described in the deed from Horace Pounds Hardy to Joyce Pounds Hardy, recorded under file number G 651828, in the official public records of real property of Harris County, Texas, and out of Lot 3 of the James Hamilton survey, a subdivision recorded in volume 83, page 342 of the deed records of Harris County, Texas, for the construction maintenance of public facilities, park improvements, water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his deputy and other city officials take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation purchase or by the exercise of eminent domain. Resolution Number 2018-2, a resolution, City Council of City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property associated with public improvements in the Lower Kirby vicinity, all of that 1.201 acre of land in the James Hamilton survey, abstract 881, Harris County, Texas, which is all of 43,560 square foot track described in the deed from Laura B. Klein to Chris S., Christopher [inaudible]. Klein to Christopher S. Klein, recorded under file number 20120085593, and the official public records of real property, Harris County, Texas. Out of Lot 3 of the James Hamilton survey, a subdivision of record in volume 83, page 342 of the deed records of Harris County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of public facilities, park improvements, water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his deputy, and other city officials take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
Okay. More, you?
So moved.
Motion second. We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report on this item.
Yes, Mayor, just as indicated earlier, these are the final two of seven properties that the city was having to move forward with eminent domain. Some of them are friendly kind of nations, and these particular two, they're not, one of the cases, we're just way too far apart, we could not reach a settlement, nowhere close to it. The other one, the individual, although the, probably the separation of prices, not that far, it's just the individual wanted to go through the whole process of the domain, did not just want to negotiate, and said that they would just prefer to go through that hearing process.
Okay. Council have any question or comment on this item? Hearing none, we do have a motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed six to one.
Information in the record, let's then move to item number three on our agenda. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-5, so moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a contract for some of our chemicals we use in our water processing systems. We had two other ones, we've broken these out into some separate contracts, so we get a little bit better pricing, and recommend your consideration for that.
Counsel have any question or comment on this item? Hearing none, we do have a motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to new business item number four. Councilmember Ordno, would you do the honor?
Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-4, so moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Staff report on this item.
Thanks, sir. As was mentioned, we have been through the process in trying to assemble properties for a future public purpose in the Lower Kirby District. This particular resolution is to paper up and memorialize that while the city will be making the acquisitions, the cost for that will be reimbursed by the PDC, so just want to have formal documentation of that for the records.
Counsel have any action or comments on this particular item? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary, we have a motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number seven, Mayor Council issues for the future council meeting agendas, starting off the new year. Council have any questions that you'd like to clarify, put on the agenda for future action? As you think about it, we'll have us on the agenda next time, so we'll catch you then. Moving then to next item on our agenda, which is an executive session under Texas Government Code, section 551.071, for consultation with city attorney regarding pending and potential Obviously, in executive session, we can discuss these items with ourself and with any other individual we would invite into the executive session, but we cannot make a decision in executive session, and must come back to open session for decision-making process. So at this point, we will recess into executive session at 7:12, and we'll eventually be back out here, so remember, what time's the football game start? Okay, tell us what the football, what the kickoff is like when we get... Counsel had returned from the next session at 8:01. Moving into our agenda to new business.
Yes, Mayor.
I'd recommend a motion authorizing the city to proceed and participate in a coalition for the recovery of insufficient franchise fee payments. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion with council? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary, we have a motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Did you get your answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further question or comment from council? Hearing done, we are adjourned for the city council meeting and city council executive session at 8:03.